Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 24, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. And tonight, we're blessed to have Reverend Michael Dean Myers from the Faroe County Methodist Church lead us in the invocation, and Deputy Andrew, I'm sorry, Andre Jindrot as from Deputy Sheriff of the Cobb County Sheriff Department to lead us in place of allegiance. So those who will enable, please stand.
Let us pray. Loving God, we first acknowledge and celebrate your presence among us. Thank you for the gift of joy, for we know this is the day the Lord has made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Your servant Paul encourage us to offer prayers, petitions, and thanksgiving on behalf of all women and men who are in authority, so that its citizens may lead a tranquil and quiet life in all godliness and dignity. So in response today, we lift up in prayer all of our elected and appointed leaders of Cobb County dedicated to serve and uplift our great community. We pray you crown our Board of Commissioners with wisdom from your mind, courage from your compassionate heart, and protection by your mighty hand. Bless them with all things necessary to fulfill their duties and successfully and joyfully accomplish their mission with a renewed passion to listen to and empower the diverse members of our county that they represent. And may this meeting and their daily service be a blessing and a hope to their constituents. Let all accomplishments be for the greater good of the people and ultimately for your glory. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen. Joined before the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you both for starting out the meeting tonight. And we have two presentations. The first one will be presented by Commissioner Burrow. recognition of Cobb County Diaper Day.
Good evening, everyone. Jerry, you and Jim, and anyone else here for Diaper Day that would like to come up? Okay, 11, well, actually, 10 years ago, this is the 11th year for Diaper Day. But 11 years ago, Barbara Hickey, Jim's beloved wife, started a committee of Diaper Day. She was on an airplane, I think, and was reading an article about how food stamps don't cover diapers and necessities like that. And she started Diaper Day. And now, every year, they usually collect over 100,000 diapers. And so this year, it's September 30th, on the square at 5:00. And you can bring your diapers that day. I know Justin O'Dell, a local attorney here, he was on the first committee with me and some others as well when it first started. And he's collecting them at his law office, too, down Roswell Street. So there's a lot of collection sites prior to September 30th, but if you're so inclined, we'd love to have you on the square, starting at 4:00 or 5:00? I think it's 5:00. At 5:00, right, on September 30th, which is a Monday. So it's early this year. It's usually the last Monday in October, but we've moved it up a little bit. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Barbara Hickey founded Cobb Diaper Day. In 2009, she launched the committee-wide collection of diapers and led the Diaper Day Committee that advertised Diaper Day, picked up diapers from local businesses, and held a donation drive in Glover Park. Each year, upwards of 100,000 diapers were donated. In Barbara's memory and in honor of her compassion, the Diaper Day Committee will spearhead efforts to collect diapers for low-income families throughout the month of September. The 11th Annual Cobb Diaper Day will be held at 5:00 PM, Monday, September 30th, in Glover Park on the Marietta Square. And whereas all donated diapers will be given to local agencies such as Communities and Schools of Georgia and Marietta Cobb County, Live Safe Resources, Must Ministries, Serf Familia, Seven Bridges to Recovery, Simple Needs Georgia, and Sweetwater Mission for distribution to help ease some of the burden local low-income families face. In the last 10 years, nearly 1 million diapers have been donated. And whereas in these tough economic times, securing the most basic of needs is a challenge for many families. Low-income families sometimes must choose between food and diapers because the average cost of diapers is about $100 per month. And food stamps do not include hygiene projects such as diapers. And whereas daycare centers require parents to provide their own diapers, and local nonprofit organizations can only disperse diapers to their clients four times a year due to lack of resources. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor the efforts of the Diaper Day Committee and urge the business community, concerned residents, and nonprofit organizations to collect diapers throughout the month of September to help hundreds of local families and children. This the 24th day of September 2019. Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
Jerry Barr with the Center for Family Resources. And we want to say thank you to the community for the support, for all of the agencies that receive these diapers, to be able to serve our clients. Because as Joanne mentioned, it costs at least $100 bucks a month to be able to provide diapers for your children. And sometimes folks have to make a choice. Do they buy milk and bread for the family, or do they buy diapers? So this truly makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Hickey's husband, and I'm at a loss of words. Each year, the community rises up and helps those that are less fortunate than themselves. And that was Barbara's dream when we moved here. She wanted to help those who needed help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. She remains in our hearts forever.
You can now have Anika Jenkins and any other representatives from the Show Me Shoe Foundation, please come forward. Welcome. We have a proclamation from the board. Longtime friends, Anika Jenkins and Siobhan Bullock, had the vision to inspire young girls to follow their dreams, to help build confidence from the soul. They saw the need for more women to reach back in their communities and be great mentors for other young ladies. And whereas in 2009, they launched the Show Me Shoe Foundation with a founder and five team members in Smyrna, Georgia, and a founder and three volunteers in Kansas City, Missouri. The Show Me Shoes Foundation mission was only to accept donations of new and lightly-worn women's dress and casual shoes. And whereas, for almost a decade, and through their work to give new souls to women in need, they found additional problems happening in the community and worked diligently to find solutions to these problems by creating initiatives like Teen Masterclass, where they show the value of education through interactive, career-focused experiences; Prom Project, that donates the luxuries of a prom evening in Operation So Beautiful, that mentors young ladies to help them develop confidence. And whereas, through the support of volunteers and donors, thousands of young girls and women in Atlanta, Georgia, Chicago, Illinois, Jacksonville, Florida, Los Angeles, California, and Kansas City, Missouri, have received not only shoes through the foundation, but also the tools needed for a successful and prosperous future. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor and congratulate the Show Me Shoes Foundation on their 10th anniversary for their work to restore strength, instill confidence, and provide mentorship to young men, young women, and girls, given this 24th day of September 2019. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to Cobb County and community and schools. They've been so gracious to allow us to bring our Operation So Beautiful program that just kicked off last week. We're currently meeting once a month to talk about self-love, confidence, from the soul. And when we say soul, we say S-O-L-E, you know, like the shoe. So it starts there. And we're just grateful. The girls were really excited. They want us to meet more than once a month. They want us to meet more than 90 minutes. So hopefully, we can do more of that soon. But we're just grateful to serve Cobb County. We have a Cobb County alumni here. I am from Kansas City, but this is home. I've been here for 12 years in Smyrna, and just grateful that we're able to serve this community. And thank you all for your support. Thank you.
All right. What a great way to start the evening. All right, we have a couple of public hearings. And the first is to conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Hilltop Drive and Hilltop Circle. So I'll let Erica brief us on what this proposal is, and then I'll give us the guidelines. All right?
Yes, sir. So we would like to request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing for the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Hilltop Drive at Hilltop Circle, which is located in Land Lot 443 of the 16th District, 2nd Section of Cobb County, Georgia. Determine that the said right-of-way services serves no substantial public purpose and authorize the disposition of same by quitclaim deed to the adjoining owners of Hilltop REI LLC and Edwin C. Allam and Mary A. Allam, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay. So before I open the public hearing, just want to give everybody the ground rules. Each speaker has three minutes. Unlimited number of speakers. And we ask that you'd please let us know who you are and where you live when you come up to speak. So that, I now declare this public hearing open on the proposed closure and abandonment of a portion of Hilltop Drive and Hilltop Circle located in Land Lot 443 of the 16th District, 2nd Section of Cobb County, Georgia. Would anyone like to comment on this matter? Would anyone like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, I now declare this public hearing closed.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we have a second public hearing. It's going to be presented by the County Attorney's Office on some recommended amendments to the Cobb County Official Code.
Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. My name is Brian Johnson with the Cobb County Attorney's Office. I'm here this evening to present for your consideration a proposed amendment to Section 106 of the Cobb County Code referring to streets, sidewalks, and other public places. This proposed ordinance also adds a new Article 7 to govern small wireless facilities in the county rights of way. During the 2019 legislative session, the Georgia General Assembly enacted Senate Bill 66, Streamlining Wireless Facilities and Antennas Act. This act allows wireless service providers to install small cell antennas and equipment, also known as mini-cells, on certain poles in the county rights of way. These will be streetlight poles. This new law only applies to installations in the county rights of way. Private property remains governed by our county's zoning code. This first picture shows that small cells do not replace cell towers, but rather work in tandem with those towers to enhance the capacity of the wireless service provided. Small cells are necessary in more densely populated areas to handle the demand for services. This demand continues to increase as more smart devices are developed and used by the public. Because they do not have long range, like towers, they are relatively close together to cover the capacity needs. These few pictures show some examples of antennas and equipment on some various poles. These are some existing poles in Atlanta and one right next to the state Capitol. Some of the provisions of the Small Cell Act include the following. It applies to all public rights of way in Georgia, allows for height and size restrictions by local governments, requires review and permitting processes. All pole installations must go through the county's permitting process. It authorizes payment of fees to the county dependent on the type and location of the installation. Allows three installation options: small cells on existing poles, replacement of existing poles, and construction of new poles. Allows for the county to determine whether requirements of the act have been met prior to approval, with the ability to reject permits in certain circumstances. It requires wireless providers that wish to deploy in Cobb County to meet in advance with county staff to discuss the number and the timing of the planned installations. Small cell permits. Once the county determines that a small cell application meets all the requirements, the county must issue the permit. Both the county and the wireless providers must adhere to certain deadlines known as shot clocks. Once the permit is issued, the wireless company has six months to complete construction. This idea is to prevent speculative polls as mere placeholders. Each permit is good for 10 years and may be renewed. This proposed ordinance to amend the Cobb Code would bring the county policy in line with the new state law and other federal requirements, to aid county staff and wireless providers in the review of the permitting process, grant authority to the Cobb County Department of Transportation staff to approve or reject small cell applications in accordance with the new law, and serve as a published development standard for small cell facilities in the county rights of way. This is the second of the two required public hearings, and I would now request this board open the public hearing for comments.
Thank you. Same rules, unlimited number of speakers, three minutes per speaker. Let us know who you are and where you live. And with that, I now declare this second public hearing open to solicit comments and input on the proposed amendment to the Official Code of Cobb County, Part 1, Chapter 106, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Spaces. Would anyone like to speak to this matter? Would anyone like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I now declare this second public hearing closed. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to Commissioner Cupid.
Does the board have any questions regarding this? Okay. I move that the board adopt the amendment to Part 1 of Chapter 106 regarding streets, sidewalks, and other public places.
Okay. Any discussion? Call to question. Passes 4 to 0 with Commissioner Rotten absent. All right. And then I was advised that the first public hearing only required one public hearing, so I'm going to turn the floor over to Commissioner Burrow for that motion.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the closure of a portion of Hilltop Road as presented.
A second? Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Call to question. It passes 4 to 0 with Commissioner Rotten absent. Okay, thank you. Okay, those are the two public hearings. How many people signed for public comment?
There are 11 persons.
Okay, so we'll do 6 and 5 tonight. All right, so the first 6.
Dr. Benjamin Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ben Williams. I reside at 5307 Elsie Lane Southwest, Mableton, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, I am here at the podium tonight to speak once again regarding the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. Good news is, after my last appearance, or our last appearance, in attending the last two meetings of the board, there was 100% attendance at that board meeting. We also were advised of an update from the board, from Commissioner Cupid, of the current appointments to that board, which for us indicated that the board has followed through on its responsibility in attending to the appointees. That has not been the same thing by the elected officials who share appointing authority with this board. We have agreed to continue to be before our Board of Commissioners because you are the majority stakeholders as specified in Senate Bill 266. It's a seven-member board, and this board has been authorized to appoint four of the seven members. That's not to say that we will not be in communications with the other elected officials, but this venue, over time, has proven to be receptive to us, hospitable to us, and responsive to us. So that is why we will continue to occupy this space. Sad news is that one of your authorities, that is the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, has not taken up the tone that's been set by this board. They tend to continue to meet in a fashion that maximizes somewhat of a Star Chamber arrangement. Some flirtation with those of us who've invested some time in trying to better understand what they do, find out where it is, we might be able to be helpful, limiting that opportunity and as quickly as possible retiring to executive session for unspecified amounts of time. I understand that somebody's privileged to go into executive session to talk about certain items. I believe, though, that your example and the standard that you set as a board, that is to maximize transparency and to minimize, if you will, the mystery around the conduct of our business. So I want to bring that to your attention. The second thing that I want to try to point out in my remarks is I've reviewed some budgetary and expenditure information. And at best, I am able to deduce that where we stand now is somewhere south of spending $8 million, possibly more. And it is not clear on what we have been able to get for the expenditure of that money in advancing the primary reason why the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority exists, and that is to develop in its two target areas, namely Six Flags and Mableton. That is at best fuzzy, and of course, I'm not aware of anything at this point. And I have asked several questions being there and offered a number of observations while meeting with them and getting an opportunity to address that board. So we need you to do something, say something, to get some action from your authority, your authority, that would at least get them to try and replicate the way in which you interact with those citizens here in Cobb. Thank you so much.
Ron Syfen.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ron Syfen. Excuse me. Excuse me. There's been considerable discussion recently that you're debating between a five-year sploß and a six-year sploß for the next sploß. I'm here tonight to express concerns about a five-year sploß. If we approve a new sploß in November 2020 that goes into effect January 1, 2022, then it will, if it's a five-year sploß, it will end December 31, 2026. Now, on the surface, it seems like, okay, put the next sploß on the ballot in November 2026. But the problem is state law. State law requires an 80-day period between the vote and when the next sploß can go into effect. So if you do a five-year sploß, and if you did the next renewal in November 2026, you would have to end sploß collections after December 31, 2026, have no sploß collections for three and a half weeks, and then have all the businesses that changed all their systems three and a half weeks earlier, three and a half weeks later, they would have to go back and put in the extra penny sales tax. That's really not reasonable. An alternative could be doing this, doing the vote two years ahead of implementation. But come on. Think about how much difficulty we had with this current sploß, voting on it 14 minutes, 14 months ahead of time. And by the time we got to January 2016, some of y'all were already complaining that, well, I hadn't anticipated this, I hadn't anticipated that. So now, we're going to go 26 months earlier than the implementation of the sploß? And the only alternative to those two alternatives would be going back to calling, putting a sploß on a special election, when we might get a 10% turnout if we're lucky, we might even get an 8% turnout. We're disenfranchising the vast majority of the voters. That's not fair. This is a tax. The voters should be given the opportunity to vote on it. So I would encourage you not to go with a five-year sploß. I'm not a huge fan of six-year splosts. I would prefer to see four years. I would encourage you to make the debate between, be between a four-year sploß and a six-year sploß, and eliminate the five-year. And again, I'm not a fan of a six-year sploß, but I would rather see a six-year sploß than all of the problems that we're going to have if we do a five-year sploß. Thank you.
Sheila Edwards.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. I apologize, I'm just getting over some bronchitis, so please bear with me and my voice. My name is Sheila Edwards. I reside at 6314 Century Park Place, Mableton, Georgia, 30126. As a citizen, homeowner, taxpayer, voter, and community advocate in the South Cobb area, I'm here to speak with you about the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. As we know it in South Cobb, the SCRA's main goal is supposed to be to represent our community and develop our community. However, there are suggestions that representation... However, there are suggestions that representation and development are either not occurring or being compromised. On June 10, 2019, some three months ago, I sat down in front of my computer and penned a letter to the Board of Commissioners, and specifically to Commissioner Cupid, expressing my deep concerns regarding issues that have risen regarding the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. After sitting in meeting after meeting and listening to issue after issues raised by other members of the community that were not being addressed by the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, I figured I would take my concerns directly to the Board of Commissioners in hopes of a response that I could then take back and share with the community in hopes of quelling some of their concerns. I shared with you in that email that there were disturbing facts floating around our community regarding SCRA, and that I was not in a position to scrutinize them. However, if there's a lack of oversight, accountability, transparency, or conflicts of interest occurring, this cannot be ignored by any of us. I reminded you that other community members and advocates have brought matters to your attention and have expressed similar concerns about SCRA. I requested that you utilize your authority to conduct a thorough review and proper examination of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. This included, but is not limited to, review of current membership, lack of membership on the Board, residency review of Board members, staff, consultants, lawyers, and others, review of conflicts of interest by Board members, staff, consultants, lawyers, and others, review of how appointments of consultants and legal representation are made and how their conflicts are vetted prior to assuming a role with SCRA, review of expenditures of SCRA funds, review of relationships with developers, including employment, consulting opportunities, review of meeting dates and times to allow for public participation. I share with you that most Boards and Commissions require members, staff, and consultants alike to sign an annual document which declares that they do not have conflicts of interest or allow members to reflect the conflicts if they exist. If this is not occurring for SCRA, I suggest that it be given appropriate consideration and immediate implementation. I ask that you conduct a thorough review and that you make this information available to the citizens and that you take proper action if needed. I understand that the Board is appointed by the Cobb Commissioners and Cobb delegation, and I request that you partner with the Cobb delegation to undertake this action. If neither of you had the authority, I ask that you advise me on who does so that I can make my request directly to that person. To date, I received no response or reports to the questions I raised. Commissioner Cupid did send me an email in response to my email and indicated that the county attorney would take a look at the legal matters inclusive of conflict. To date, I received no information. Finance was supposed to provide me information on expenditures of county dollars with authority. To date, I received no information. The clerk was going to assess that there are any Mableton residents serving on SCRA. To date, I received no information. Commissioner Cupid did acknowledge that she has received numerous calls and emails regarding the authority and reflected that she had her own challenges along the way. She also mentioned that it had been a misfortune in the need to resurrect the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. Our community concurs fully and would like to know the steps needed to place us back under the Cobb County Development Authority. While questions swirled around the SCRA at its last meeting, it was suggested that a marketing study be undertaken. My question is, what happened to that study that was done just a few years ago? Why were the actions, what were the actions, and what were the deliverables? What has changed in the South Cobb community that would necessitate a new study? Having worked in government on the local, state, and federal level, as well as in corporate America, you don't just order a new study for the heck of it. And you just don't go out and spend money just because you can when the most recent study is only six years old.
Ms. Edwards, I'm sorry if time's up.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman, and members of the Commission.
Ms. Wilson, Denny Wilson?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Denny Wilson, and I reside at 56 Hillcrest Drive, Ostele, Georgia, 30168. And yesterday, I turned 63 years old. Of the 63 years that I've been on this earth, I have lived in unincorporated South Cobb for mostly 36 of those 63 years, which brings me to my presence before you tonight. Doug Stoner is the Chairman of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. He authored and passed legislation, which was Senate Bill 266 in 2011, as a state senator, changing the South Cobb Development Authority to the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, and also increasing the boundaries of the authority so that we touch the boundaries of Smyrna. The mission of the South Cobb Development Authority is supposed to provide a broader mission of redevelopment and revitalization for South Cobb. But if you look at the progress since Doug Stoner was elected Vice Chairman in 2013 and Chairman in 2015, you will find very little progress other than the on-off ramps for the Six Flags Drive exit interest ramps. Now, you may say that's a good thing, and it is. But what about the Magnolia Crossing development that has set undeveloped for five years without any plans of development in sight? No formal RFP have been issued for the development of this property in five years. This property has the most beautiful view of the Atlanta skyline. You guys should go by and take a look at it if you haven't already. It's easy access to I-2285, 7585, and it's 10 minutes from downtown Atlanta. The amount of monies that's been spent on this property without any future development plan in sight should be examined by the Cobb Board of Commissioners, the Cobb delegation, and should be recommended to the state Attorney General's Office for a full investigation. Doug Stoner had a vision for our community that does not include us, and he's made that clear in every South Cobb redevelopment meeting that I've attended. I've advocated for potholes filled in school zones where children have had to walk to school, speed limit awareness, placement of speed common devices, and posting speed limit signs, as well as cleaning up the right-ofways. But none of this could have been possible if I didn't have you guys' support. And I thank you guys for the support that you've given me so far. But what bothers me is one particular incident I alerted the BOC to was an oil gas spill, gas leak in our community, to only be told that there were no gas spill against the findings of the EPA report and our Commissioners' on-again, off-again email comments. To silence me, I was told, this seems to be your approach on a number of matters that we've come to expect from you here at the county. As you continue to seek assistance from the county, it would be impossible to not view it with a dark cloud hovering over it. This is what I was told because I brought communities of petition in the state to dissolve of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority due to its inability to redevelop, revitalize our community, and again, allow the Cobb County Development Authority to include our community as I think we'll receive better growth and development under their leadership. If the BOC is not willing or able to act on this, then please, please, point us in a direction that we need to go in the community so that we can get some help with the ills that our community is suffering. Thanks for allowing me to speak.
Coakley Pendergrass?
Good evening. I was asked, where's my sign? I'm having enough troubles just getting up to the podium. Good evening, my name is Coakley Pendergrass. I live at 428 Cedar Trace in Marietta, Georgia. Chairman Boyce and the Commissioners, I'm asking you, from the standpoint of a community activist organizer, faith-based community person, we must provide a space for the community at the table. When decisions are made for the community, the community must be at the table. I'm here for two points. One is I want to talk to you briefly about the original flex bus issue. And also with that conversation about that 10X, we have to figure out a way. The flex bus is still in service, but instead of setting it up where it could benefit the community and also pay for itself, they continue to use it as a reservation service. A 15-passenger bus goes out into the community, brings back one or two people. That doesn't make sense to me. That could have been changed, that could have been corrected. We understand there's contract issues with Uber and Lyft, but why still go through that same process? As a community organizer, we have meetings and we have points of may. One, and this bothers me, we have people in the community that have to use public transportation, and they say that as they are trying to get to the transfer station, a flex bus passes them. How does that make sense? These are taxpayers. We must, I'm going to go back to the major point. There's a string that goes through these issues that we have in the community. First of all, we appreciate our sitting board. You guys are, you know, we know you're good people and we respect you, but there must be a power sharing in this situation we find ourselves in as we go forward. We elect, we in the community, we vote for the folks that take these seats. You can't forget who you're working for. I want to shift now to my second point. And the situation we have is the Commissioners and the delegations, who are the state representatives and the senators, they create a, in the South Cobb area, you've created an unreasonable power broker. And that's the Chair of the SCRA. The Chair ignores the community. The Chair is so powerful that he cannot be touched. And you know what? He's the only one of you who does not have to worry about being reelected. The bottom line is that the community has to have some input. There's a 50-acre space, five acres of that has water, so we're talking about 45 acres. In South Cobb, and that area is called the Magnolia Crossing Project. The community asks, the community demands to be at the table as equal partners. Thank you for hearing my statement.
Rich Pellegrino?
Chairman and Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to address you. When I was handed that sign earlier, I said, are we allowed to hold signs in here? And, you know, somebody said, yes, but, Rich, since when do you care about the rules? So we're making progress together, working together. And that brings me to the point of what others have spoken about, the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. We viewed it originally as an invading force back under past administrations because the community was not consulted and was not taken into confidence. However, in the spirit of cooperation, we've tried to work together with it. And members have changed and so forth, and there's some recently appointed new members that a sign of hope. However, as others have said, it operates in secrecy, okay? There is no transparency, and we know that's the watchword of this administration, thankfully. You have work sessions that are open to the public. I mean, it's not rocket science. They can do the same thing. So there are ways, if you want to involve the community, that you can. So if the Board of Commissioners has any influence at all on the process, then please use that influence to bring the same type of transparency to that authority that the Board of Commissioners practices here. Secondly, we've, I'm part of SELC, which is Dr. King's organization. Dr. King started the Poor People's Campaign right before he was prematurely taken away from us, and it has been revived now nationwide. And we want to revive it here in Cobb, and we are, under different names, but let's use the name Poor People's Campaign. Let's not be ashamed of poor people, of our poor. We are a diverse community, not only racially, but economically and ideologically. So let's include the poor that we're attempting to serve in our deliberations. On Six Flags Drive or Riverside, we have a tireless advocate for the poor who is not here tonight, Monica Delancey, who is able to bring them to the table to talk about their own needs. So whatever we're doing, if it's, you know, development of Magnolia Crossing, which affects them, there's got to be a community benefit agreement, there can be community land trust, other communities around the country are doing it, anti-gentrification efforts or pro-community inclusion and community wealth building efforts are happening in Jackson, Mississippi, Cleveland, Ohio, Roxbury area of Boston. So there's models on how we can be inclusive and make sure everybody is rising together in the county. And Dr. King said we needed a radical revolution of values where we put people in front of property and profit. And so if we can always just keep that in every, for instance, we saw you down there when the apartment complex debacle took place, and that was great. It was total inclusion at all levels. And that's another model and example of how we can develop, keeping in mind the needs of the people that we're serving. You know, recently, I mean, to me, it was a no-brainer. There was a homeless transition center for ex-offenders that was proposed without any tax dollar money or funding. That was disrupted, that process. In Mableton, of all places where for 10 years we've worked for that, to serve the people who don't have a voice, to give people another chance. So we've got to make sure we put those principles first, the principles of people before, or at least balanced with property and profit. Thank you.
Chairman, that concludes the first section of the public comment.
Onto the consent agenda, just a couple admin notes here. After discussion yesterday at agenda preparation, we're going to withdraw Consent Item Number 6 on Superior Card Administration and Consent Item Number 12 on the water system until a later date. So I'm going to ask Brad to roll the consent items on the screen, and then last, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. So I'm going to ask Brad to roll the consent items on the screen, and then last, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent. All right, on the regular agenda, and we'll start with DOT and Ms. Parrish. It's all yours.
Yes, sir. The first item this afternoon for consideration is to request that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA 32-3-4 and authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on five parcels on Gordon Combs Road sidewalk.
Commissioner Campbell.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of four Transportation Improvement Program grant applications to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Preliminary Engineering Design of Marietta Transfer Center Relocation, Cumberland Transfer Center, and Marietta Maintenance Facility Expansion, and then the implementation of the Transit Signal Priority.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Discussion. Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution in support of the Town Center Community Improvement District's submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Nunde Creek Trail Crossing at Cobb Parkway.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution in support of the Cumberland Community Improvement District's submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission's for Steel House Trails.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
So the next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant applications to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Concept Design of Four Proposed Projects, Cobb Parkway at Windy Hill Road, Great Separations, Roswell Road at Johnson's Ferry Intersection Improvement Study, Nunde Creek Trail Extensions, and Ostel Powder Springs Trails.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of two Transportation Improvement Program grant applications to the Atlanta Regional Commission for roadway improvements on Old 41 Highway and intersection improvements on Dallas Highway at Lost Mountain Road and Mars Hill Road.
Commissioner Campbell.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of three Transportation Improvement Program grant applications to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Construction of Mapleton Parkway, Pedestrian Improvement Phase Two, West Atlanta Street Trail, and the Proposed Americans with Disabilities Act Compliance Sidewalk Improvements.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank grant application to the State Road and tollway authority to assist with funding roadway improvements on Old 41 Highway.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $103,752.55 for drainage system repairs on Circle 75 Parkway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Accelera Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $163,820 for drainage system repairs on Gateon Road.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $212,370 for 2019 Countywide Americans with Disabilities Act compliance sidewalks.
Commissioner Campbell.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to the contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $66,529.75 for roadway improvements on Canton Road at Liberty Hill Road.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Luallan Construction Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $98.30 for Shaliford Road sidewalks.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the 2018 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Detection Engineering Technology, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $4,000 for installation of two additional overheight vehicle notification devices on Concord Road Covered Bridge.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
And then the final item for consideration is to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize the procurement of mitigation credits from the Three Creeks Cattle LLC in an amount not to exceed $55,267.41 for stream impacts associated with the Woodland Brook Drive over Gilmore Creek.
I'll make a motion to approve. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes three to zero with Commissioner Cupid and Otten absent.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, the remaining public comment?
Yes, Chair, the first one is Ken Howell.
Good evening, Commissioners and Board. Tonight, I would like to address three issues that have a direct impact on our communities. And by communities, I mean all of Cobb County. The first of these issues is the elimination of the flex bus service and it being replaced by Uber, Lyft car service, which does not meet the mandates of a public transportation service. It is our hope that the Board will revisit this issue. We have given statements and arguments in the past, and I will not belabor those points tonight. Mr. Chairman, you and I have had this conversation, as well as with Ms. Cupid. And we need to revisit that. Right now, Uber and Lyft are having their own internal problems. And I don't see why we need to get in a fight with them, or their corporate management, in order to provide a service that we can very well provide in our own with the changes that we have proposed from the GCC. Secondly, I would like to address the makeup of the Transit Advisory Board. The Board is not set up, in our view, representative of the community that it serves holistically. Corporate Cobb holds a monopoly on the appointments to that Board. Working class and/or labor people cringe when I say labor. Labor has no representation on the tab board. There's only one member on that tab board who even comes close to being a representative of labor. For the BOC to deny labor a seat at the table where recommendations are made on behalf of taxpayers is without a doubt discriminatory. And that needs to be addressed. The third issue is the Sunday service and the poor implementation that it received. The Route 10 and the Route 30 are the two heaviest routes in that service. However, the Route 10, which services Art Center and Cumberland, is in service until 11:30 at night. However, the Route 30, which services Home Station in the South Cobb, the last bus leaves from over there at 7:30, and the service ends at 8:50. The two heaviest routes. Why? And my question is, and I don't need an answer to it, is is that to ensure that the service to the brave stadiums continues into the late hours of the night? I don't need an answer. I think we can draw our own conclusions to that. There were no schedules put up at Home Stations or at the Art Center to let the passengers know what time the bus service began or ended. And that first night, when the service ended at 7:30 at Home Station, my phone was jumping off the hook because people couldn't get home. They got called at Home Station, had to take the train all the way back over to the Art Center in order to get on the Route 10 to get over to Cumberland, back in the Cobb County. And remembering that all the other buses stop at 8 o'clock. So the Route 10 isn't connecting with anything. So why is it still running till 11:30? Both of those services should be running until 11:30, the service both ends of Cobb. And I guess my time is up. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will revisit these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. And we'll look at those routes, those issues involving the routes. That's a good point. I'm glad you brought it up tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Jacobs.
Good afternoon. My name is John Jacobs. I stay at 1504 Cold Ridge Lane, Appleton, Georgia. I'm attempting to stay calm while I get my thoughts together. The incident that brings me here tonight, I guess what I'm here to talk about is the injustice of Cobb County. One afternoon, I was walking home. When I was attacked by two cops, they claimed I was obstructing them. I was charged with obstruction. I sat in jail 10 months for this charge. During this time in jail, I was attacked by a guard who also claimed I interfered with his duties. I'm a Navy veteran. I've been living in this county for 20 years, and I find this highly unacceptable. So I'm asking the Commissioners tonight, what are you guys going to do about this? What can be done about this? Additionally, the court system. While I was out on bail, while I was out on bail, I was attacked by a Smyrna police officer. He confiscated my property, destroyed it, claimed he was looking for a robber or whatever he was doing. Since this time, I've had numerous run-ins with the police. And I feel I just can't take it anymore. So I want to know, what are the Commissioners going to do about this? I have much more to say, but I can't do it.
Okay, do me a favor. First of all, thank you for your service. See the young lady there on the end. Leave your phone number and your name, and I'll look at this and get back to you, okay?
Larry Savage.
Good evening. I'm Larry Savage. I am resident of Cobb County. And have long, for the last few years, I have been something of a critic of the Development Authority of Cobb County. And I want to bring to your attention some things that I've turned up here in the last few days that I find a little bit disturbing. In the years that I have looked at the Development Authority and the projects that they have funded and the tax abatements that they have provided, until just a few years ago, they'd never done office buildings. And then all at once, they began to finance and provide tax abatements for office buildings. They had never done apartment projects. Now, I've seen, I follow this outside Cobb County as well. And they have done apartments in Atlanta and Fulton County. The Development Authority is there. And in 2013, John Williams was involved in a high-rise project in the Cumberland area that was about half rental apartments. And I really believe that was an effort to try to expand the Development Authority's reach into apartment projects. In that case, the school district opposed it successfully in court, and they withdrew the application. But here, just in the last few weeks, we have a, let's see, $27 million for 250-unit multifamily in Ostel Walton Reserve, it's called. And we have $24 million senior living revenue bonds for 131 units of Brickmont West Cobb. And we have $24 million for 162 units, McKeachern Senior 2. All at once, we have the floodgates opened up to start financing apartment projects and providing the tax abatements that go with that financing. Among the things that I have noticed here, first of all, the one for, that was the first one I said here, Brick, not Brickmont, but Walton Reserve was brought forward by the Housing Authority of Cobb County. After all these years, I'd never even heard of a housing authority of Cobb County. But now we have an active, it turns out, I had to do the research, turns out they were authorized years ago. And apparently, it's been populated. Now we have a housing authority in the business of providing tax abatements for apartment projects. But the other two are kind of interesting in another respect. They were here a month ago, both of them. Brickmont and McKeachern Senior 2 were both here on the agenda, and I think one of them's on the agenda tonight. I'm not sure of that. Nobody seemed to know. I watched the meeting, and nobody seemed to know why you were voting on revenue bonds issued by the Development Authority. And I've never seen that done either, so I was more than a little curious about it, and I looked into it. What you were approving was that they wanted the financing with the bonds to include tax-exempt status by the IRS. Normally, municipal bonds are exempt from federal taxes, or the interest paid on municipal bonds are exempt from federal taxes. But that does not apply when government municipal bonds are issued for private projects, except in certain cases. And you approved that these projects, or the one project you voted on, you approved that to the And you approved that these projects, or the one project you voted on, you approved that to the, you certified basically to the IRS that these projects meet the requirements for, to get the tax-exempt status for, for the IRS. And that took me to the IRS code. In the cover letter, which was written by Jessica Gwynn, you're referred to Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. And I'm sure you're all familiar with that, like I was. So I had to go and look it up. It's about tax-exempt bonds, and all that says, that they cited the part that says you have to approve it. You don't have to approve it. It's not, you're not ordered to approve it. These things are done subject to your approval, that you certify that these things meet all the requirements. I'm not gonna have time to go through all this. And one other thing I want to touch on real quickly, reading from the text of the IRS code, public approval requirement. "In general, a bond shall satisfy the requirements of this paragraph if such bond is issued as part of an issue which has been approved by the governmental unit." And then further, it says, "The applicable elected representatives of such governmental unit after a public hearing following reasonable public notice."
Mr. Savage.
You didn't have a public hearing.
Mr. Savage, I'm sorry your time is up.
You didn't have one tonight. It was held by the lawyer for the Development Authority in the meeting room at the Chamber of Commerce. That's not how you do a public hearing.
Caroline Holka.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Caroline Holka. I live in District Three in unincorporated Marietta, 30066. I came before the board today to state my support for Kelly Gambrell's choice of J.C. Bradbury for the Development Authority of Cobb County. It is absolutely vital to the healthy development of our county that we get some members on the Development Authority Board that aren't just interested in giving out large handouts to large corporations. The Development Authority, I understand, is a state organization, but we have a choice about what that looks like. And what that should look like is being filled with people who are determined to be good stewards of public money, not an endless supply of checks for developers. So again, that's really all I came here to say, is that I support Commissioner Gambrell's choice of J.C. Bradbury for the Development Authority of Cobb County, in the hope that it will rein in some of the freewheeling atmosphere of that authority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lance Lamberton.
I love the timing of that. My name's Lance Lamberton. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I live in Austell, and the reason I'm here before you tonight is also to express my support for J.C. Bradbury, Professor J.C. Bradbury, to serve on the county's Development Authority. And I especially want to thank Commissioner Gambrell for nominating him to his post. Quite frankly, I can't think of any candidate in Cobb County who's better qualified to serve. He's an accomplished and extensively published academic who's especially well-versed in public finance issues that the Development Authority has called upon to consider on a regular basis. Therefore, his nomination should be a slam dunk. Unfortunately, that is not the case, and it has become mired in controversy because some of you take issue with the point, with the point of view he has with respect to what has become the elephant in the room in Cobb County politics for the past five years, namely, the economic impact of the Braves deal on the county. In my opinion, he speaks truth to power and is not afraid to point out that the emperor has no clothes. But regardless of whether he is right or wrong on this issue, having a contrary position to the county, from the county's political establishment and being extremely articulate and well-reasoned in communicating his position is all the more reason why we should appoint him to this authority. The political and economic culture of our county is well-served by having a diversity of opinions on the important economic decisions that we make on behalf of our citizens. And any attempt to stifle that diversity by insisting upon all who serve on our various boards conform to a pre-established set of beliefs and opinions does not speak well for the county. I, for one, do not want to live in a county which operates under the assumption that to get along, you got to go along. We need to arise above the petty vindictive spirit that motivates opposition to Bradbury's nomination and instead show our citizens and neighbors that at least in Cobb County, we are not afraid to let the sunshine of open, robust debate be the standard by which we are judged. For assumption, for assumptions that go unchallenged inevitably sooner or later result in a flawed policy outcome. And this is especially true as it relates to economic development. You know, a long time ago, someone told me that you can learn a lot more from someone who disagrees with you than from someone who always agrees with you. So I ask that you let this nomination be an opportunity to be a learning experience and that you won't, that not only will you approve the nominee with whom you agree, but also approve those who you might, from time to time, disagree. And that you will instead vote yes on Professor Bradbury's nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamberton.
Chairman, that concludes the second section of public comment.
All right, let's go segue. I'll turn the floor over to Commissioner Gambrell, since this is your nomination.
Great. I would like to approve the appointment of Dr. J.C. Bradbury to the Development Authority of Cobb County. Second?
Second? All right. Any comments from board members? Want me to go last or you want to go last? All right. Okay, Lance, I appreciate you taking my speech from me. First of all, I want to thank all the many people over the last two weeks who emailed me, called me, texted me, generated the exact robust conversation that I've always tried to do to make what I call an informed opinion. And I just want to assure everybody that I listened to everybody. I got their emails. I responded to many. I called many back. I had a office session with Dr. Bradbury last Tuesday, and I talked to him extensively last night. So the intent that I asked for the delay served the purpose that was intended for, which is to produce a bigger, a more clear picture of what Dr. Bradbury brings to this board, the Development Authority of Cobb County. But I'd like to also establish some context here, because there's been a lot of assertions thrown around here in the last two weeks by various people. And I just want to, uh, talk about the Development Authority and look, look at some numbers. Because one of the things I keep hearing about is that the board is owned by corporations and it's been rubber stamping programs. So let's just, let's just talk about, first of all, the number of commercial properties we have in Cobb County. Now, on this slide here, 13,182 is the real commercial parcel, commercial parcels. That, those are buildings, okay? And we have 44,975 other commercial entities that we also tax, a total of 44,975. So in fact, we have another, what, 21,000 or 31,000 commercial properties above and beyond buildings. So look at that number, 13,182. So forget about the 44,975, because that's give or take. You know, that's depends on what you consider commercial property, but the 13,182, those are buildings. Now, how many tax abatements do you believe the board, the Development Authority of Cobb County, has currently approved? Out of 13,182, 12. 12. Out of 13,182. Uh, I guess that's a new definition of rubber stamp. Okay? I've heard about incentives. All right, again, the board last year approved a package of criteria for incentives. And right now, 12 properties in Cobb County receive incentives. All right? So out of those incentives, next slide, this, at the bottom number is $4,614,403. Those are, those are the savings that the businesses who qualified for the incentives, all right? That's how much they saved in fee reductions. But ladies and gentlemen, that's, that's a one-time fee reduction. That's not annually. So out of 13,000 businesses who qualify, who may qualify for incentives, all right, 12 received them, and they resulted in savings to their businesses of $4,614,403. Why is that important? Because if we'd not had those incentives, we'd have generated $8,111,050 in tax revenue. But because we gave them an incentive and reduced their fees, I'm sorry, their fee reductions were 3 million, 3.4 million dollars. The net benefit to the county last year was 4.6 million dollars. So for this year, or in the past years, we lost 4.6 million dollars in revenue. But in 10 years, those 12 businesses are gonna bring us $81 million in tax revenue. But we give them back 3.5 million dollars. So I asked you something, I asked you in this room here, if I were to ask you, if you give me three and a half million dollars today, but in 10 million, 10 years, I'm gonna give you back 81 million dollars, who would not take that deal? Okay? And that's why, you know, the percentage, yes, we lose revenue, but in the long run, we generate a return which is, by any standard, very healthy. So let's just put these things in perspective. Out of 13,000 parcels, all right, roughly 26 businesses in Cobb County benefit from an incentive or a tax abatement of some kind. All right? So that's, that's the first point I want to make here. The second thing is, Dr. Bradbury. Uh, I just want you to watch what Lance said on, on the screen here. Emily qualified in every respect. But what I tried to impress on Dr. Bradbury is that, once he accepts this position, he is now a public figure. And he has no personal life anymore. And there's no doubt that some of his tweets and social media has created some, some controversy. But controversy is healthy. I believe that. But nonetheless, you're associated with that controversy. And, and what I've tried to impart to him was is that, if you're gonna be on this board, like we up here, we have to be circumspect in what we say in our comments. Because what we say reflects not only on us, but on this board and on Cobb County as a whole. And it's very important to have a board that reflects the community because it goes to a broader audience, other than just the community. It goes to outside world too, and we want people to come here and be welcomed. So I just tried to emphasize to Dr. Bradbury that no, any tweet, no matter how innocuous, somebody may want to use it against him. That's just the reality we live with, social media. So, I made it very clear, I was not trying to muzzle him in any way. I don't believe that's the purpose of this board or anybody else in this county. You have the right to your First Amendment rights. But once you become a public figure, you're held to a higher standard. And I just wanted to make sure that whatever he used on social media did not create an image that he could not be a fair and impartial observer or decider about the Development Authority issues. And he assured me a couple things. First of all, he has a family tradition that goes way back to the start of this county. Goes back to the 19th century. He loves this county. That was very clear in his comments to me. The second thing was, he assured me that he could make fair and impartial decisions. You know something? And I take him at his word. Because I take everybody at their word unless you show otherwise. Because the real, the real standard now is his sense he's committed to that, all right? If he were to buy his votes on the Development Authority reflect otherwise, then it becomes a matter of integrity for him. And I don't believe he has any way, shape, or form as an individual who wants to have his integrity challenged. So I believe, Dr. Bradbury says, he is gonna work in the best interest of this county and make fair and, fair and impartial decisions. There's been assertion by some that my, my actions two weeks ago were involving political patronage. I want to make it very clear to everybody here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, this is my second act in life. My first act is the only thing I ever wanted to be, a U.S. Marine. And when my day comes, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna have the honor of being buried with heroes. And all it's gonna say on my tombstone is my name, my rank, the operational deployments I made, and the awards that I was given. It's not gonna mention that, that I was the chairman of this county. Not gonna mention that I was successful in convincing the board to pass the Parks Bond. It's not gonna mention that I was successful in convincing the voters of Cobb County to support me to bring additional revenues so we could buy police cars and buy more police officers. It's not gonna mention that I was successful in working with the board this year to increase police pay for our first responders. It's not gonna mention any of those things. It's gonna mention the one thing that I care about the most, that I'm a U.S. Marine. And when I say, when I, when I say something, I mean it. And my integrity is, matters more to me than anything else, other than my love for my wife and my family. So the issue for me is that every day, as 50,000 veterans in this county know, because they see this, they've done this before, I simply, along with other members of this board, I hope, and I'm convinced of it, we do the best that we can up here every single day. This is a hard job. But you elected us to make the hard decisions. And one of the things that I like to have, believe that I worked for every day is to create an even tenor in this board so we can make an informed decision without acrimony. And I just find it very difficult sometimes that we have succeeded and accomplished so much as a board, and we have. This board has accomplished a lot. They should be very proud of their achievements. And even though we have our differences, I hope that we could agree that the one thing we can do is that we can agree to disagree in respectful manner and then go forward to make the other great decisions to keep the legacy of earned spirit alive in this county. So that, I'm fully convinced, based on my discussions with Dr. Bradbury and with his supporters, and also his, those who detracted from him, but they all respected from, for what he did. None of the comments they made were personal. I believe that Dr. Bradbury will, in fact, live up to his commitment to do his duty to this county, to make fair and impartial decisions involving matters brought before him as a member of the Development Authority of Cobb County. And with that, I will support his vote. And I think it's important to also highlight what Lance has said. You're absolutely right, Lance. There will be no suppression of people, of opinions in this county as long as I'm a member of this board. Everybody is entitled to their opinions, and they deserve to be heard, no matter how dissonant or otherwise. So next time you're gonna give your comments, would you please come to me first, so you don't take my thunder away from me? All right? So thank you for tonight, Lance. With that, I turn the chair over to the, the board, over to Commissioner Brol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do not support this appointment. I've expressed my concerns and reasons to Commissioner Gambrell, and I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Any other comments? See none?
Thank you. I do. I do.
Okay.
I just thought the appointed commissioner might have something to share. My support has not changed from our prior meeting. I supported you then, and I support you today in that appointment. I did try to weigh all of the feedback that we've received regarding this appointment. I did my own research again, subsequent to the last meeting. And I still did not see anything that would give me pause for him being on the authority, as I did it prior to our initial vote. I am sorry for all that you've had to endure with this one appointment. And I hope that it has opened up all of our minds to the, to the diversity that we do need of opinion and thought on our boards, and also to the amount of deference that each commissioner should be afforded in making appointments so that our boards and commissions are reflected of all of our commission districts. So I continue to support this in, in this vote tonight. So I continue to support this in, in this vote tonight.
Okay, and with that, Commissioner Cupid, I do thank you for your support and diligence. And Chairman, I appreciate your support as well, and it is with great honor that I intend for Dr. Bradbury to bring a new perspective to Cobb County, and use his knowledge and experience to help us continue to make this a great county to live in. And with that, I'd like to call the motion.
Passes, passes.
Three to one with Commissioner Burrow in opposition, and Commissioner Otte absent. And I believe we had two, two appointments to the board. Let me recite my script here. Yes, I'm going to, is it okay if I make the announcements? Is everybody fine with that? Okay. So I'd like to announce the reappointments to the Kennisaw, Kennistone Hospital Authority of Bob Philammon to Post One, Janie Maddox to Post Two, and R. Randall Bentley, Senior, to Post Three, to the Kennistone Hospital Authority for a five-year term to expire on May twenty-third, 2024. And with that, sorry, those are just the announcements. So with that, I'll start with Commissioner Cupid on the commission comments.
Very few comments tonight, except for me first humbly apologizing for not publicly announcing the level of joy that has been brought to my office in seeing the return of one of my former commission assistants, Bianca Keaton. If you don't mind coming forward, so we can see you and acknowledge you.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Bianca.
And thank you for having me come back.
Thank you.
It's been very, it's been a very warm welcome, not just from the staff, but also from the constituents. So there were lots of hugs this morning, I mean, this evening, as I came in to see all these familiar faces, people that continue to do work here in Cobb. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Bianca. Thank you for all you've done this week, and know that Andrea Ashmore will continue to serve part-time with Bianca. Thank you. Also with that, want to thank residents for coming out to our fourth annual HOA workshop. It was a continuing success, and could not have done it without the organization of Monique Sheffield, who serves on our variance board, and just hope that we continue to support residents who are leading in their communities through support and advocacy. With that, those are all my comments for this evening.
Commissioner, Commissioner Gabriel.
Thank you, Chairman. First, we'd like to announce that Carrabas on Barrett Parkway is once again teaming up with Blue Thanksgiving, and they will be donating ten percent of your total check to our public safety officers here, not only in Cobb County, but in the surrounding counties. This will be on October first, from four to ten P.M. So please come out and join us and support our public safety. And next, we'd like to have everyone put on their calendars for October twenty-sixth. I have partnered with Still Family Farms, and it will be the place to be. We are going to do an event there to help support Safe Path Children's Advocacy from, on October twenty-sixth, from ten to seven P.M. You can join us on the farm and share a little bit of heaven, that is, in West Cobb that many don't know about. The date will be filled with hayrides and mazes, ice cream and crafts with little painted faces, tractors, pumpkins, and touch-a-truck, with a few racing ducks running amok, cornstalks and honey, and a maze to run around. Children and adults will come from all over town. Don't miss this day, for the purpose is clear, we want all children to have a day filled with cheer. Hope you can join us.
You good?
I'm good. I was waiting for it to finish.
Oh, okay. All right, so I'll make sure.
Sorry.
No, that's all right, so I'll make sure.
It, the time is from ten A.M. till seven P.M.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow.
Of course, I have the longest announcements. I'll take Commissioner Otte's time tonight. I first like to say thank you to the Bells Ferry Civic Association for their participation in the Adopt a Mile program, and cleaning up Bells Ferry Road on September fourteenth. And a big thank you to Officer Farr, our Community Engagement Officer for Precinct One, for keeping the team safe, and also to keep Cobb beautiful, for supplying everything. This morning, I had the honor of attending the Free Little Library opening by Girl Scout Troops One, Seven, Six, Five, O. These young ladies and their leaders began working on this project back in February, and after months of planning, teamwork, and building, the Free Little Library opened at Skipwells Park. They brought books for children and adults, and as the saying goes, take a book, leave a book. So thank you to Girl Scout Troop One, Seven, Six, Five, O. They are from Chalker and Palmer Middle School in the Bells Ferry area, and thank you to the parents that helped them build this cute little free little library. Also, a big thanks to Parks and Rec, and to Billy and Mackey for parent, preparing the area, and submitting the poll, and all the stuff that goes along with it. Next, I'd like to say congratulations to Major Bullock, first on his graduation from the FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia, and also his promotion to major. He will be assigned to, he'll be the commander at Precinct Three, the Cumberland area. So congratulations, Major Bullock. This Friday, we are having a tree dedication for, in memory of Skipwells, at the Skipwells Park. As most of you probably recall, he was a Marine that was killed in two thousand five, two thousand fifteen terrorist attack in Chattanooga at the Armed Services Recruitment Office. He was a graduate of Sprayberry High School, and a couple years ago, we named Bells Ferry Park, we renamed it Skipwells Park in his honor. And last year, we planted a tree at Skipwells Park in his memory, and the plaque is in, and with the help of Keep Cobb Beautiful, on Friday at ten o'clock at the park located at twenty-three thirty-four Bells Ferry Road, we'll have a small ceremony to dedicate the tree. Once again, a reminder, Diaper Day, drop-off donations, September thirtieth, five P.M. at Glover Park. Also, there's a organization, next slide, Brad. There's an organization called Rescuing Hope. It's part of Marietta Alliance Church, and on October third, at the church located at seventeen eighty-seven East Piedmont Road of Marietta, they are having a seminar, or I guess, open house on sex trafficking, and what you can expect, and what to learn about that. The program will be on October third at seven P.M., and you can go to www.resquinghope.com for more information. Saturday, October fifth, is the annual, the eleventh annual Oktoberfest at Holy Trinity on Sandy Plains at Ebenezer Twenty-nine Twenty-two Sandy Plains Road. It's a great festival, there's lots of food, and German food, and beer, and all kinds of activities for kids and, and adults. So the admission is five dollars for adults, two dollars for children, or you can bring canned goods for the Mus Ministries pantry in lieu of an entry fee. And you can go to holytrinitymarietta.org for more information. Once again, we are, through our purchasing department and Cobb County Schools, we are hosting our How to Do Business with Cobb Tuesday, October eighth, at the Senior Wellness Center, Powder Springs Street, in the big ballroom. You do need to register, it is free, but if you email ingor.everhard@cobbcounty.org, or call the office at seven seven oh five two eight three three one seven. I think we have about seventy, seventy-five signed up so far. And it's an opportunity for you to learn how to register and be an approved vendor with the county and the Cobb County Schools. But also, you get to, you meet our different department heads and learn, you know, what type of supplies that they can purchase, and, and it's more one-on-one, and it's a great event. And last but not least, on October thirtieth, we are honoring our Korean War veterans at the Cobb Civic Center in partnership with the Georgia Department of Veterans Services and the Consulate General of the Republic of Korea. We want to thank them all for their service to this great country, and they will get a special Peace Medal and a certificate at the ceremony, October thirtieth, at two P.M. at the Cobb Civic Center. And there are forms in the back. If you know of any Korean War veterans, or if you are one, we'd love to honor you on October thirtieth. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Just want everybody to know that the North Georgia Fair is now going on at Jim Miller Park. Lots arise in food, and great opportunities to go out there and have a great time. So I want you to go to the Cobb County website also to apply for a position with the 2020 Census. We had a great presentation yesterday, a work session, where it's really important to have everybody in this county counted. I believe Commissioner Cupid had this incredible number of two hundred and, two hundred and fifty million dollars in, in lost federal benefits, because we didn't have the numbers to correspond to that amount. So, you know, that's, that's big money. So if you're looking for a part-time position, or you want to get involved, please go to the Cobb County website and volunteer. And then the last thing, I had an amazing thing happen today. There's a delightful young lady named Elaine Armister. Today was her birthday, and she did something I've never seen anyone do before. She went around giving gifts to people. Now, this is full public disclosure, I have a dietitian who would not be happy if I touched this box. So I'm going to leave this box here for sixty seconds after the meeting ends, and then I'm going to make that dietitian very unhappy. So with that, thanks for coming tonight, have a great weekend, and be safe out there.